The Columbus City Council Meeting for December 16th, 2024 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Allercombe?
Here.
Farr?
Here.
Keimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Lopez?
Polinsky?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
(Music) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched burst so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the hot stars singing there Came through, through the night, that our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening anyone in our audience would like to address the council, we'd ask that you come forward, please give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. All right, we'll move on with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted one by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered on its in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the December 2nd, 2024 city council meeting. Item four B, reappointments of Carrie Hamolka and Jill Zaruba to the Americans with Disabilities Compliance Committee for three-year terms. Item four C, reappointments of Jeff Vaughn, Brad Keys, and Brian Kenwood to the Board of Airport Commissioners for two-year terms. Item four D, application from BNR Stores Incorporated doing business as Super Saver Number 18 for an addition to their liquor license at 3318 23rd Street to include the newly constructed building. Item four E, resolution number R24-144 authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four F, finance department reports. And item four G, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and councilors, anything you would like removed from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing redevelopment plan for Innate Concepts Redevelopment Project. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
My name is Scott Woody. I'm living in Grand Island, Nebraska, 3481 West Shimmer Drive. I'm here representing Innate Concepts. So I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I was raised actually in Shelby, Nebraska, so I'm excited to be be around here in Columbus. It's a good kind of think of it as my stomping grounds. So in 2007, I did move to Grand Island where I started a business, active family chiropractic and acupuncture, and actually have an office here in in Columbus as well and became a developer. My mission as a community developer, what does that mean? I want to bring housing to communities to solve the housing crisis, bring jobs to communities and employers, allow individuals the opportunity to step up from their current living environment and provide the Nebraska way of life of safer communities. We've done this in Grand Island, Norfolk, Lexington, Carney, York, and Hastings, and now we want to do it in Columbus. We're looking at building in Columbus for a few years, and now is the right time. We've had we have purchased four acres of land right behind the Highland Park Church. That is just south of 38th Street and 43rd Avenue. We will build five 22-plex apartments for a total of 110 units. I did give you a handout so you could see an example of that building. In those communities that I've listed above that I talked about, this product has served the community very well and also the community members. Our advantage to our apartments is we feel like these these apartments don't just feel like apartments, they feel like homes. And a lot of times how we do that is through our our window package. And when we design them, we're considering how you feel in the unit, not hey, you got a kitchen this size, you got a living room this size, and a bedroom this size. So we also consider ceiling heights. Our apartments will have a nine-foot ceiling instead of an eight-foot ceiling. We use furnishes not typically found in apartments like a quartz countertops, luxury vinyl flooring, and stainless steel appliances. We will also have garages on the first level for our tenants. We've partnered with Neighbor Works of Northeast Nebraska to ensure a portion of the project is affordable to community members that make under 120% area median income. This is possible through an award from the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I don't have to tell you that Columbus is in a housing crisis, and there was an 8.67% increase in population from 2010 to 2020. To meet the demand of your community, you need to have approximately 127 units completed each year. But this not does not commute commute the calculate the demand of your employers. You could probably double or triple that number and still not house the entire workforce needed. So we want to meet that demand. Our apartments will be an opportunity for businesses to grow here so they do not have to struggle to find housing for their employees. As part of the redevelopment plan, in addition to building 110 units, we'll be extending the 43rd Avenue, which will include water mains, sewer sewer mains, as well as building parking lots and infrastructure to support this project. As costs have increased, it takes twice as much cash to start a project as it used to. Without TIF, developers cannot develop the housing that our state needs. After evaluating our capital stack, without TIF, we will not be able to build these 110 units in Columbus. I hope you approve the redevelopment plan tonight. Thank you for your service in making Columbus housing a priority, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What are you projecting rent at?
It really depends on our final cost of 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 the project. But for our, oh, man, for our one bedrooms underneath the 120, was it 950?
It was like 960.
960?
(Inaudible).
Yes, for a two-bedroom.
For a two-bedroom?
Yes. And that's for the 120 median income. In our other communities that we have the same design and same building, our one bedrooms, our starting one bedroom, I think, is around 1,025, 1,100.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Scott? I have to tell you, you're partnering with a great organization that's done a lot here in Columbus with Neighbor Works, so you're off to a good start there. You said you've been looking at Columbus because one of my questions for you is what's taking you so long to get here?
You know, and you know, we've built all over central Nebraska, and this this is the right time. So.
Good. We're glad it's the right time. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain closing the hearing.
(Inaudible).
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Item seven A1, resolution number R24-145 approving the redevelopment plan.
I move that resolution number R24-145 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-145. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Good luck and welcome to Columbus. Move on to reports from city offices.
Item 10, reports of council committees. Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of December 9th, 2024. Item 10A1 is a request of Mitchell Peterson on behalf of A Storage to extend the time period for completion of the public improvements for Peterson addition to October 21st of 2025. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Brings us up to new business. Item 13A, appointment of Steven Zarate as a police officer.
Council members, the mayor asked with your permission to submit the name of Steven Zarate for conditional appointment as police officer, subject to successful completion of all tests and training. The Civil Service Commission certified this candidate at their August 20th, 2024 meeting. Per council rules, a two-week waiting period for the appointment of a police officer is waived. Steven Zarate currently resides in South Sioux City, Nebraska. He attended Norfolk High School and earned his bachelor degree in criminal justice from Wayne State College. He has past experience as a correction officer and as a security officer. Steven has attended the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center and is currently employed as a deputy sheriff at the Polk County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Zarate will participate in the Columbus Police Department's field training program, and this is a budgeted item. I'd entertain a motion for the mayor's appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. I would mention that Steven is not here with us tonight, which is unusual because normally when we introduce a new officer, we then introduce him to the public. But he is on duty in his current position in Polk County, so we have to we have to let him let him continue to do that. We'll introduce him next time we have an opportunity. Yay.
Item 13A1, resolution number R24-146 approving the signing bonus and buyout agreement with police officer candidate Steven Zarate.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-146 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R24-146. Any discussion?
One question. He currently lives in South Sioux City, and he works in Polk County. Is he planning to move somewhere close, or is he going to commute? I know our we're allowed officers to now live outside the city limits.
Well, he's living in Chief Shear, 2330 14th Street, Columbus Police Department. He's currently working in Polk County and lives with relatives in Stromsburg right now. But they're looking at moving to Dodge County. They've been looking at houses over there. His wife is is kind of a therapist, and she'll be employed in the Columbus area as well. Hopefully, we can get him to move to Columbus at some point.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R24-146. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, quote from Road Builders Machinery and Supply Company and the amount of $18,000 for snow push plow. This is CIP number 21-21.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Road Builders Machinery and Supplies Company for snow push plow to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Road Builders Machinery and Supplies. Any discussion?
Be prepared just in case.
This way we're ready if it does come. All right. No, no questions, no discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, quotes from Restaurant Supply LLC, Eeks Office Solutions, and SEI, and the total amount of $23,229.12 for commercial stove, two computers, 10 banquet tables, and three security cameras for the senior center. The Nebraska Presbyterian Foundation grant will cover all of these expenses.
Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, move that the quotes from the Restaurant Supply LLC, Eeks Office Solution, and the SI SEI for stove, computers, tables, and security cameras be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote for all of that. Any discussion? And it's great for the Nebraska Presbyterian Foundation grant. We'll cover that. All right, without any questions. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, purchase from electric pump and the amount of $10,346.33 for emergency pump replacement for sewer lift station.
Don't everybody jump at once. Come on.
I move the purchase from electric pump for emergency pump replacement be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the pump purchase from electric pump. Any discussion? Chuck, I just have one question. This is an emergency pump replacement. Do we keep one on hand? Is this is that what this is, or did we use that one, and this is to have the one that's on hand?
This is a duplex setup, which all our lift stations are. So this is our secondary pump, but we can utilize other pumps from other lifts if we need. But we don't like to get in that situation where the actual original setup of duplex working system's not working. So that's why we opt to replace the pump.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase. And a for without further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, authorization to sell surplus Phil Sand for $3 per yard.
Okay, somebody wants to?
Mr. Mayor, I move the request to sell surplus Phil Sand be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to sell surplus surplus Phil surplus Phil Sand. Any discussion?
Just for the public's knowledge, this is sand that was brought in with the 2019 floods onto the Quail Run Golf Course. We removed over a million cubic feet of sand from the golf course when the flood went through. So we've been holding that sand. We've had to follow all the FEMA regulations, test it, hold it. Those that FEMA project is now closed out, and we have permission to dispose of the sand. Public Works has been using it where appropriate, but we have more than we need in a long time.
Good. All right. We have a motion and a second to sell the surplus Phil Sand. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Now we lost our whole audience.
That's something we said.
Yeah, they wanted the sand.
They didn't want to buy sand.
Motion passes.
Item 13G, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Council members, we have any comments this evening?
Wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to staff and community. You bet.
I have just one item. Our newest engineer, Brayden, just passed his certification for something.
Graduated.
For something.
Graduated his master's.
Yeah, I just got my master's degree in civil engineering this past weekend.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. Great. Yeah.
I would just like to make the comment and let the public know, if you aren't already aware, that the Columbus High School Unified Bowling Team won the state tournament this past or last week. So, again, a shout out to them. We always like to recognize our students when they when they do well.
Yeah, back to back. And same Lakeview came in second in Class B, too.
Very good for them. And and then kudos on the Merry Christmas to all as we get ready for this upcoming Christmas season. All right. We move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R24-147, amending the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 1575, to include a second personal holiday and annual sick leave payout.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-147 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-147. Any discussion?
This is just to reflect the changes that were made in the personnel manual at the last meeting.
Okay, so a little bit of house house keeping and house cleaning. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R24-148, amending the cemetery rules and regulations for the Columbus and Rose Lawn Cemeteries.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number R24-148 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R24-148. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R24-149, approving the lease agreement with Lance Lear for land at the Columbus Municipal Airport. The Board of Airport Commissioners recommends approval contingent on the sale of the hangar from Mutual Flyers being finalized by December 31st, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R24-149.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-149. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R24-150, selecting the design build delivery system for the Cemetery Maintenance Shop Edition project at Rose Lawn Cemetery, and designating city engineer Rick Bogus to serve as the performance criteria developer. This is CIP number 25-39.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R24-150 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-150. Any discussion?
Rick, do you want to just comment on you kind of alluded that we're this will be a savings to us, and the original plan of the building would have been a lot greater?
Right. So, you know, doing doing an addition to an existing building that already has some of the storage in it, it has the restroom in it. It has a two-bay, basically just for pickups and and parts and and tools and things like that. So, do an addition into that building, which is on that southeast part of Rose Lawn, for a backhoe and then that lost truck. So, interior in the bay, we're adding like an office where people could come and and look for plots and look at purchasing plots and things of that nature. It'd also be for the supervisor of the cemeteries, who is now currently in the Quill Run Maintenance Building and the backhoe stored in the Parks Department. So, put that all together, that's a lot better location and cheaper than building a brand-new facility somewhere. So, that's why we go in this direction.
This may not fall exactly under this, but it does fall under cemetery. So, let me ask, and it may not be to you, Rick, it may be to you, Doug. There's been some discussion recently about some type of directory or something for our cemetery. Maybe not going into great detail, because it's not exactly, but it's a cemetery, it's got Roseland on it. So, what do you think? What do you want to say?
We're working on that. We're working with the Clerk's Office and Engineering. So, hopefully, eventually, we can get. We got a lot of work to do to get all the stuff up to date as far as P and our records. We still have some records that are on three-by-five cards. So, we have to get all that up to speed. And so, we're talking to different groups of how we're going to do that, and whether we will use codes and stuff. So, you come up and you put your phone on, you can figure out where the grave is and all that technical stuff that I don't know about. But I know people who know about it, so.
So, it'd be it'd be safe to say it's a work in progress that we're addressing.
It's a work in progress. It's going to take us a while.
All right. Appreciate it. All right. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R24-150. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas to all, and enjoy the holidays.